Makes some good progress.
Can I ask your question?
Yeah, I could just ask, I think there's a lot of studies that have been done already, so I would just ask that those be leveraged rather than spending money on things that may have already been studied. So if they exist, you know, because I know there's a lot of studies on this that thousands of other cities have done across the US.
Oh, absolutely, and that those are being looked at, but the actual cost of service is very unique to us.
Right, right, absolutely.
And that's what we're looking at, is what is unique to us.
Okay.
Rep Huff, Mayor and Council. Well, I think the issue that is at the heart of this is what is the profit margin that the city is making off of the power after the service and the power itself is paid for? That's the question, is what pays it costs facing just for the power greater than what it costs another city just for the power? Because as far as the profit margin, it's just another tax. And honestly, I'd rather have a tax that I can control by turning off my lights and taxes that are applied to churches and schools as opposed to not paying a property tax. So I think that's where the question lies, it's not so much that our rates are so much higher, it's how much are we paying for the actual electrical and the service? That's my question.
All right. Do you have anything else? Okay, after Ross, we'll close then.
Ross Huff? If you raise your property taxes enough to cover the cost of war in your electrical costs, the people with larger properties that use less power are going to be subsidizing people that have smaller properties but have a house with a washer, dryer, dishwasher, three TVs, and eight kids. So a large property owner that uses a small amount of power will be subsidizing someone else. Thank you.
All right, Sarah, do we have anything else on this? Is there any other questions?
I have one more question, and this might be saved for the work session at the end. But my question is this, when we talk about transparency and things like that, I think it scares a lot of people when they see this big lump sum transfer and it's put into notice, but it just looks like it's going to a slush fund and it's not. Is there a way that we do those general fund transfers, we can have another sheet that says this is where it's all going, so it's all accounted for? Because I think one of the concerns is, is it being accounted for properly or are we just using a slush fund because we don't spend well? If that makes sense. Like, I don't know how hard that is, but that would be something at least in the work session that I'd like to discuss, because I think we would alleviate a lot of concerns if they could see, when we say we're transferring 1.5 million dollars immediately, where did it go?
Kind of open the general fund for that services.
It's hard to say because it goes, like Councilmember Phillips says, it goes to the general fund, which we could say covers police, or fire, or parks. So we can pick and choose, because the general fund covers so many areas. What I could do is I could say, here's our shortfall without the transfers, and here's what's transferred in from the enterprise funds that we use to make up that difference.
Right, I guess, yeah.
I don't know if that would help any, but it's hard to say where exactly it's going, other than the general fund. We do have indirect service charge that we do charge to the utility funds to cover our customer service costs, to cover administration, finance, HR, things that they would have in their own entities had they had their own individuals performing those duties. So we try to allocate those based on those cost strikers. You know, I can show everybody that, only go through that, that's another thing that I can show, I sent that to Mr. York today as well. So honestly, I can, I'm willing to sit down and meet with anybody and discuss any questions they have.
Which, I would say, if you do have any questions as a citizen or myself, we have a great asset here, and Sarah's really open and she's really willing to talk to anybody. So don't be afraid to come down to the city office. I don't want to overload her, so she can do her job, but she'll talk to you about it.
I basically tell it like it is.
She does.
I don't hold any punches, and that probably gets me in a lot of trouble. But I am, I want to be open and honest with anybody that wants to come in and talk.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing, do we have a motion to go on public hearing? Do you have a second? A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, we're now into a public hearing on the SX3 subdivision, deferral agreement, and I will turn that over to Jill.
Mayor and City Council, the applicant is requesting preliminary plan and final plat approval as well as a deferral agreement for the SX3 subdivision. So just to give a little overview of where this project is located, what it consists of, this is just a locator map showing here, so this is 800 South, this is I-15, this is 800 South, so the 800 South interchange, you have Wendy's and 7-Eleven in that location, you have Ridgestone that's down here off the page, and then this is the entrance into the base of this park. So it is a vacant parcel, well, there's two vacant parcels, but it is a little over four acres here that the applicant has recently purchased and would like to subdivide it into four lots in order to accommodate additional commercial development in our community. So here's just the outline of showing the portion of property in this area, how it relates to 800 South, how it relates to that private road that provides access to 7-Eleven and Wendy's, it is actually within the boundaries of the state property.
I mean, we're gonna put a motel in there one time, weren't we?
Um, I think that there's been a lot of different users that have looked at this site in the past, and Mayor, now that you mention that, one of the challenging factors for this piece of property, and Mrs. Bailey is figuring that out, is there is an existing or old irrigation ditch that is owned by the Bureau of Reclamation. And so that is how all of these farmlands here receive their water, their irrigation water at one time was through this open ditch system. That has been piped back in 2006, 2007, that irrigation facility is actually piped and is beneath the road, but the easement or the right-of-way has not been relinquished by the Bureau of Reclamation. So as we have been processing this application, the city manager and I have been working with the Bureau of Reclamation to find a way to actually remove that facility or the right-of-way from the site so construction can begin on these properties. So we've made some progress there. So just as a project overview, the applicant is requesting subdivision approval, which consists of two approvals, preliminary plan and final plat. Also with this, the applicant is requesting approval of a private street. Now, the private street already exists, and that was constructed for this business here. But the reason why she's needing the approval from the city council with this application is because lot number three, I'm gonna go to that real quick, so here's the subdivision layout. So you've got the private drive that comes into this location, she's wanting to tuck in another commercial lot back here in the back. So these three parcels, so lot two, one, two, and four, they have direct access onto 800 South, or they have that frontage on 800 South. But because she's tucking this lot back here, you have to have frontage on a public street or a private street that's approved by the city council. So it's already in, but to satisfy the minimum requirements of the subdivision ordinance, she is requesting approval of that private street.
Now, on that commercial piece in the back, I guess my only concern would be parking.
And I have a, I have a layout that will show how she's gonna take care of that, thanks, Mayor. But just, so she's looking at preliminary plan, approval of the private street, final plat approval, and then the land use authority is the city council, so the city council is the final authority on this application. There was, with the subdivision, it required a recommendation for the planning commission, that did go to the planning commission in December, and they did forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. The applicant is also requesting approval of a deferral agreement. The reason being is these lots are located in a commercial zone, and we don't know who the end user's gonna be and when they're going to be developed. And so, because typically in a residential subdivision, you come in, you subdivide, you bond for, you put all the improvements in, sell lots. It's a little different commercial and industrial areas just because those, some of those parcels could stay vacant for some time, and we don't know what the end user's needs are going to be. Is it a one-inch water line, is it a two-inch water line, what is the power needs? And so it's very site-specific, and so it's what the deferral agreement will do, is it will allow those improvements to be deferred and the improvements to be completed lot by lot as an applicant comes in. So with the deferral agreement, it is an agreement, so the city council and the land use authority on that as well, you would make, you would enter into that agreement with the property owner. The third process that needs to be done, which has not commenced yet, is site plan approval. And so as each business comes in for those lots, they are required to submit a site plan, that means the requirements of the city, to address design, access, utilities, all of the specific needs for that particular business. There is a business that's anticipated on lot three, and I'll go over that in just a minute, but the Stalleys are wanting to put a firearm sales and ammunition business and an indoor shooting range. So, and then the land use authority on site plans, if it is permitted use, which this is, would be at a staff level. And so, once that is submitted, we have more information, we will send that to you as, you know, so you're aware of this project moving forward, but they will work with directly the staff on the necessary approvals. So here's a copy of the subdivision, just a layout of the subdivision, you have the existing 7-Eleven here, you have lot one, two, three back here, and four, 800 South here, showing utilities extending into each of these lots off of 800 South. There's an easement that goes along about in this location on lot number three, or lot number four, that will provide access for drinking water and irrigation for lot number three, and then, I know this is hard to understand, or something I need to explain it, the sewer actually goes back behind 7-Eleven in that location, so it will be extended and come down to provide sewer service to all four parcels in the subdivision. Here's a copy of the final plat, it shows the configuration of the parcels. And then, I know this is, this is a little hard to see just with it being so light, but the applicant, part of this process with looking at a commercial property is, that is going to provide us a general overview of how this property can be developed. Because access, cross connections, 800 South is a limited access road, and so there's going to be shared access points, there's going to be cross connection over into some of the other parcels in order to provide the two points of ingress and egress. So there's a lot of things that would need to be done, the buildings are gonna have to be out front for a requirement that we have. Also, just going back to her request, because she's wanting to retain, selling off one, two, and lot four, but wanting to retain lot number three so she can build her business back here, and then there will be a underground shooting tunnel that will actually traverse all, or lots one and lot two, but it'll be subsurface, and so she's needing that distance in order, you know, for the range. And so, she's indicating the necessary easements across that property, even one of the potential buyers of this parcel is aware of that, it will be something that's on the plat, and something that future buyers will be aware of. And so, parking, as the mayor had mentioned. So as you can see, if buildings are placed, I mean, these are one-acre lots, and so if the buildings are located here, and if you have the parking in the back, and even potentially designing it this way, you could have a building out on the street side, per building in the back, possibly having a cross connect even with shared parking in this location.
You wouldn't be able to put a building up into the metal because of that easement, correct?
Correct. And so that's why it was so important that, you know, even just at a basic level of providing a concept plan, making sure that can we still provide or maximize the building space on the parcels, taking into consideration that there is going to be that 50-foot wide easement on the property for the underground tunnel. So that is, that is the presentation. So there's still some items on the staff report that need to be done, I know we've been working with the applicant as an engineer for the last couple of weeks to try to refine this and to get some of these conditions off of the staff report. The latest revision that they submitted was on Thursday, but this report had already been submitted to you, so there has already been some changes to this, some of these items have been removed from the staff report. But if the city council grants preliminary and final plat approval, we will continue to work with the applicant to get these items resolved and get the plat recorded. And the applicant is here, Stephanie Bailey is here, and she's got a crew with her, and so she's got her contractor and different people here, so if you have any questions
This is a public hearing, and do you have anything as far as the applicant, would you like to say? No?
I think Jill Scott has covered.
Okay. Means this is a public hearing, it's opened up to the public, if we have any comments, you can come up. Seeing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, Mayor.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now out of public hearing, and do we have any discussion as far as the council or a motion?
Yeah, a question, Jill, on the private road, does 7-Eleven, will they have, do they have a right-of-way through that, or are they gonna be cut off? Because this is not on 7-Eleven property, so what's gonna happen to the 7-Eleven?
There already is an agreement that is recorded against the property, it's been recorded for quite some time, it was something that was done with the previous property owner, so that has been addressed, I know that's something that the Stalleys looked into to make sure that that was resolved, who can access, who's responsible for maintenance, things like that, so there is already a document recorded.
Okay, and then the next question, you talked about parking, which the mayor brought up, on lot three, if they put their building in and they're looking at shared parking, is that gonna come later down the road when somebody develops another lot, or they could have enough parking for their, on their lot three?
It's just gonna depend on how, the size of her building, of how many parking stalls she's going to need. She may be able to accommodate all of those without having the shared parking, but just recognizing as this area grows, and if there happens to be commuter rail in the area or things expanding, anytime that we can find an opportunity for shared parking, we definitely want to explore it. But, you know, she would be responsible for hers, but through the design process, if we could have it designed in a way for shared, that would be preferable.
Linda, you have any comments?
I don't.
Okay, any other comments from the council? A motion?
And then, just going back to that slide, so preliminary plan, final plat, reference to the private street, and then probably separate, and Mark won't defer to, you don't have a further deferral agreement, separate motion for that.
Going once?
I'll make a motion that we approve the subdivision, the preliminary plat with the private street, and then the final plat with all staff conditions being met. Anything you need to add to that, Jill?
Okay, we've got a motion.
Does he need findings?
Yeah, if he has any, that would be, so it's helpful.
And add findings to that.
Finding that it meets the business goals or whatever of the city.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
What was that, Linda? Seven aye? Okay.
Yes.
Against, any names? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we'll...
We need a deferral.
Motion carries on that, so now the deferral, do we have a motion on the deferral?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a deferral agreement to delay installation of the improvements until you have site plans for each lot.
I'll second.
Okay, we're gonna motion a second, any other discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries now, this, what was the other one, the site plan?
No, site with plans, that'll be done.
Or is that it? Okay, all right, all right, so we'll go ahead and motion carries on all of them. So, we'll go out of public hearing, and, oh, we've already done that, so next thing on the agenda will be an ordinance mending the possession of, or consumption of alcoholic beverages or tobacco products, and I'll turn that over to Dave.
Mayor and Council, we're proposing that we amend Title 15 to that point four, point nine. Utah County had sent us some requests with some of the issues of having e-cigarettes, I think it's covered in the state law, but they want it more clear in our ordinance. We looked at some of the other ordinance suspension work, and some of the other communities have already adopted that for their parks, so we're proposing that our ordinance be amended, that non-tobacco products of any kind, including e-cigarettes or any variation thereof, is permitted to be used within the city open space parks and other recreational facilities or other public property. We did exempt out the last golf course, that's with the possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages or the tobacco products, we do have a current bear license up there for our, for the golf course, so we exempted that park only out of our city parks.
Did you exempt them for just alcohol?
Alcohol and the tobacco. And I see consistent with what we found some of the other golf courses.
We're gonna make a discussion, because I know something's all around in here.
I got a question on tobacco, is that just outdoors, or is that indoors and outdoors and at the golf course?
Well, the golf course is exempted.
For indoors also?
Well, not indoors, not indoors on the clubhouse.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, that's not spelled out there, so...
It's for outdoors.
Does that need to be spelled out or not?
We can add that, I think the Clean Air Act trumps that, but we don't allow it in the clubhouse or any public buildings, but I'll look at that, if you want to make part of your motion, if we need to clarify that, we can add that in.
Okay, so a motion, or is that just a, what is this called, man? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number...
We don't need a number.
Don't need a number.
No, so we'll assign it.
And then, Title 15, you know, the base of the city ordinance is regarding open space parks and recreational.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, well, this is a road call, so, Scott?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next thing is a request for reduction in parking stalls, and I'll turn that over to Jill.
Okay, Mayor and City Council, we've got a site plan that has been under review by staff, and as we've been finalizing some things with the applicant, because of some of the other requirements of the ordinance, there is a request to reduce the number of parking stalls in this development. So the property that we're looking at is, this is 140, or 1040 West, this is the road that goes down to the state in Simms, you have 800 South here, you have Don Schuys on the corner, UCCU in this location, steps recovery, and so on. So this is a site that Dr. Hack is looking at developing there, is wanting to put two professional office buildings in that location, so this is the site plan, or the site plan that he has proposed. And so, as you can see here, you've got the two buildings that are just right at the top of the ridge before you have the, you know, until it goes down into the gateway area, you have the parking lot that would be here adjacent to the parking areas or the access areas for UCCU. So the request for reduction, so as I mentioned, site plan process, as I mentioned earlier, is done at staff level, and so we have been working with him to get through these requirements. Project phasing is he's wanting to get site plan approval for the entire project, so for the two buildings, but is only wanting to construct one building at a time. But granting site plan approval for all at some point in the future when that second building is built, they will only have to come in and get a building permit. The off-street parking requirements, it requires, based on the square footage of the buildings, and this is just based on the main level square footage, the applicant has indicated to us that the basements will only be used for storage, and we do not include the storage requirement as part of the, to calculate the required parking stalls. So based on the square footage of the two buildings, we need 64 parking stalls for the entire project. The applicant's request is to reduce the requirement by six parking stalls, so basically 10% of the overall parking requirement. So just as an explanation of what those are for, is two stalls are from the original site plan, because the original site plan that they brought in was only showing 62 parking stalls, so they were already shy to. Two for the entrance, because we do have a requirement that the first parking stall, so coming off of the street, that the first parking stall has to be a certain distance away, and that's for backing, for backing out or those movements people coming in, and so they would be losing one on either side of this access here. The other, the other one is two stalls for the cross connection and/or for access to a sewer manhole. The sewer for this site is actually coming through the parking lot area here, so there's a manhole about in this location here. Well, we require that those manholes be in a hard-surface area, preferably a dry way, and so the sewer equipment, the jet truck, and that can get in there and access that easily, they're not destroying landscaping, not having challenges getting to those facilities. And so, working with the applicant, and he has contacted UCCU as far as a cross connection for their secondary access, of possibly coming in, I don't know if it'll be in this location here, they're finalizing that, but it could possibly go in this location, and then you kill two birds with one stone, you have that secondary point of access, and then you also have access to the sewer. So part of the require, so part of the reduction is needed because of other requirements of the ordinance.
So are they reducing it by two stalls or four?
Six, six, so that's why they're two, 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 adding up to six, so six total is what they're requesting. Now, I believe Dr. Hack is here, correct?
Just run.
And so, he's in the dark, but, so if you have any questions for the applicant as far as this request, his business is currently located in the state, doesn't have anywhere near the number of parking stalls that's required for this new site, the building is smaller, but, you know, just looking at the functionality of his business and the parking stalls that he has, it's worked well for his business. So by reducing it to six stalls, he doesn't foresee any challenges with this business or with other businesses going in the building. But if you want to address...
My question is, is we're reducing the stalls, and it's great for his business, but what if he sells? It's the next business to come in, so we're gonna have problems there.
And we do look at, when a new business or when a tenant space changes businesses, we do look at that, you know, that's part of the zoning review with the business licenses to determine if there are any other zoning issues that would need to, so if there was another user that came in here that demanded more, that business may not be able to go in here because they don't have enough parking. So, Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up, because I mean, that's always a challenge that we face, is, you know, yeah, it may work for today, but what happens in like some point in the future?
Ten years from now, we might be fighting at another fight with the next guy that wants to move in, that's my only concern.
And that's why we asked the question also about what is the basement going to be used for, because if you were adding that as business space, so having four businesses to the building instead of just two, then there's more of a demand for the parking. So we've talked to him about that, and like I said, he's designed it in a way for storage space.
So how do you guarantee that when you sell to the next business owner, that it won't turn into two businesses? Like, is, so if he says basement is storage, that's fine, but what about the next guy that comes in and he says, I want to put in a business? Is it zoned, that he can do that without going through you?
Well, the approved site plan would be for two businesses per building on the main floor, so that's what the approval is for site plan.
So they would have to change it?
So if they were coming and changing that, they would have to go through the site plan approval process to make that change, and the limitation may be the parking.
Jill, on the parking, do we have different types of, I mean, you let talk about the size of the building, we need so much parking, but is it the size of the building and what's in that building, or is it just one ordinance that says size of the building and...
It's the type of business, so we have very, we have different categories, whether it's professional office, or retail, or restaurants, or warehousing, I mean, we have, and then there's different ratio...
We have that many square footages, don't we?
Yes.
All right, the applicant have anything you want to say?
I guess the only comment that I've made is...
If you can come up and just talk into the microphone. State your name for the record. State your name for the record.